Well, it's about thirty seconds.
Okay.
Good evening, this is the Parksville Planning Board meeting on September the fifteenth at six P M. It's called order at this time. And we'll go right down the agenda and try to follow it as close as possible and make sure we don't skip over anything. One of the couple of the first things we have to do by our documents is to let a new chair and a new vice chair. So we as the planning board need to make some motions at this time. And I'm open to any motion for a chair at this time if you would like to make it.
Right, or I'll want to make this.
Okay.
Um, with the exception of Sagan and myself, also people sitting on this board relative to them.
Uh huh.
Uh, the way that we, and let me stress this first, I'm not on the chairman, so they can take that out of your equation. The way the election went down last time was kind of arbitrary. What I'm suggesting is, we don't really know each other or our policies and what we can can't do. I'm suggesting that prior to having an election, we take some time, uh, a little longer time, and take the chairmanship and the reputation. Everybody gets a chance to do it, then we can observe the real capacity of people. That also gives us a chance to really know each other better in terms of performance, um, and make an informed decision about this chair. Because at this point, I don't think we have any classes.
Good point for you to bring up, but at this time, as the chair, I still am in the chair position for now. I want us for this time to go ahead and make a motion for a new chair and a new vice chair.
I'll make a motion that we entertain what I said and create people.
You have a second on table? No, second. Motion fails.
I'll second that.
Oh, I'm sorry. They just spoke up. Gerard just spoke up in second. Does anyone, does everyone fully understand the motion that's on the table at this time?
Any questions?
Any questions about it? Anyone? All in favor of the motion that's on the table at this time, please raise your right hand. One, two. All opposed, raise your right hand. Three, motion fails. Okay, so now we need a motion for a chair at this time. We would entertain the motion for the chair of the planning board at this time.
I motion for you to continue as chair.
Need a second for the motion?
Second.
Did second move to second, that I remain as a chair? Any comments? Any discussion?
Um, I'll be frank, I have some concerns with continuing as a chair.
That's okay, I don't care.
Well, I'm just telling, I mean, and this is not an attack, um, but there've been quite a number of parliamentary problems in the last few minutes, and I think they leave us open to some legal procedures. Um, I think your value on this board is, and is like a nest of multiple, is huge, and your expertise as an engineer is huge. If indeed you want to continue as chair, you're going to need to pay more attention to procedure. I know that's your intention to do so, you want to set this. But, um, I mean, we can review the past videos and talk about the problem.
Yep. Alright. All those in favor of the motion that's on the table at this time? If there's no other comments, I don't care about it. Please raise your right hand if you're in favor of the motion that's on the table at this time.
I just wanted to make one comment. I'd like to, I agree with Mr. Neal's statements in regards to that needs to be a little bit better decor on the board in regards to if someone brings something to the board that they don't feel like is that they're being yelled at or retaliated against, or, you know, this is a place for the meeting of the minds, not for personality conflicts. So I would hope that we could go forward by knowing that we're here to work together.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. One, two, three. Three opposed?
You should vote for yourself.
The two opposed, so the motion passes. Uh, anyone that'd like to make a motion at this time for vice chair, please do so. Can I have a motion for a vice chair from the board? Anybody second that motion?
Second.
Oh, any discussions? Any at all?
So we haven't seen what he's done yet, but I guess we'll get to him. I'm sorry, I'm papers.
Any other comments on the motion that's on the table? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
I can't see it up there.
Five, motion passes. So I guess the people that's in the, will stay in the same capacity as were the last time in session. Correspondents. Let's move down to number two correspondence, please. Our correspondence is, has to do with the minutes from office eighteenth meeting, and has everyone went through it, I hope, looked at the, uh, the minutes from the meeting, and has anyone got any questions or comments on those correspondence? Motion to accept the minutes as submitted. Second by Sagan. All in favor of accepting minutes, show your right hand, please. Five. Okay. There is no exception to the first meeting of the workshop, the people will know if you're following the agenda. We had a COVID issue that had to be addressed, so we didn't have a court. We had to leave, and that meeting did not take place. If you skip on down now, any other questions about reviewing the minutes? Okay, now we'll go down to number five, old business site plan review. Paul Bean, one oh two Lloyd Watson Road, about few, nine lot, seven, add new deck to existing deck. What we had asked him to do from the last meeting was to submit us a package defining in detail the decking itself by drawings, and from what I've read on his submitted, uh, his package he did submit to us is completed this time from what I could see unless somebody sees something different that we might have missed up on. Any questions over the site plan review for Paul Bean, one oh two Lloyd Watson Road? Any questions at all? Just take your time to look it over, please. If you have it, yes. All the elevations are in here. Please the elevation, show them. Anybody got any other questions about any of these submitted, any of these drawings For the other part of this package, just take your time and just look through it, please. I've been through it a few times already.
You addressed everything you asked.
Yeah, I think you addressed everything about them. I didn't see any moving parts. In fact, we got extra drawings. Do we, uh, has everyone had enough time to look through the submitted, the new submitted? Any questions over the package as submitted? Anything at all for the board to discuss? If not, the board, the board would entertain a motion at this time?
If I'm able to define this complete application.
Do we have a second? Sagan, second. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Unanimous? Do we want to go ahead at this time and approve the application as submitted? Those are going to have a site walk there.
Other than the butters?
Or is any of butters here for the, for, uh... For being the, uh, for the beating property? Any of butters to the property? Any questions on it from the butters? Okay, the board with a, a chair will accept the motion at this time to accept the application or approve the application as submitted. Sagan makes the motion. Do we have a second for that motion? Second by Andy. All in favor, right hand, please. Unanimous?
Exactly. We nailed it.
Okay. Mr. Bean, your package is finished.
Okay, great.
Site plan review, item number B, under five, site plan review of Helen Boucher, one hundred week stroke, that R thirteen lot thirty-nine, turn basement into duplex, two bedrooms. We, let me get down to this one. I hope everyone looked through your package really good, and especially looked through the submitted on the subsurface wastewater disposal system application. What they say in this wastewater.
I emailed it out to them, so she has her copies left for you guys.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody, we've got hard copies, does anybody want a copy from Miss Boucher?
Thank you. You had the question that had a top of the draft on that?
What is this for?
It's for, what's the picture?
She's not...
And then...
The other thing is, well, maybe considering these controls. Those variants is ever requested, they got to be requested through the, uh, uh, call for some comments by the city. We need to get, so we can, please, please. See, now here's...
I think they vary some size of the...
Yeah, you have to hear the question. About one, two variants on that page. We, we're not the last to be, and that's our only advantage here. So, would you... Did you use that last page?
Yeah.
Most of the last four variances are that, most of them are there. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I do point out something.
Yes, sir.
This was on the last month's agenda, and, um, basically, uh, that time, yeah, and I guess, or from what I read, like, they told us that they needed a variance. And from reading on, it says requested variances, so, um...
It's not a variance.
Yeah.
Well, if I...
The coenforcement sent us here, he said we should ask for something else other than a variance.
It's a dimensional requirement.
It's, what we're reading here from your submitted on your septic systems, what we're talking about.
Jesse said that he'd sign that tomorrow, and then we can get it sent into the state.
I emailed him a copy of it, or I texted him.
Makes no difference. What we read here documented from the state of Maine, well, I won't go, we see what's on it. Yes, Gerard?
Um, I guess the, the question that I had was, what we had been told the last meeting was that, um, Mr. Winters had contacted the town attorney and said that you guys only had three acres, so you needed a variance if you were going to put in, um...
He told us the wrong thing.
Yeah, it's a dimensional requirement.
Because we called him on the phone the following day, and he said that we should have been asking for a dimensional requirement.
Okay, that explains that, thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's what happened, it was, it was very wrong, Gerard. But still, when you read this, when you read this package that their engineer put, or that did their, looked at the review, their septic system, their shore on size, and also the state of Maine says that they have to, uh, they have to upsize, and their, and the state of Maine is saying that you require those two variances that the state of Maine Health and Human Services has listed. Just take your time, it's on one of the last pages from that report.
Can I just ask you guys a few questions, so I can come up and speak? You're looking to put a new apartment, new basement, is that correct? Are you going to add another bathroom, something to the guy?
We're adding, well, right now, so when we purchased the house last year, it had two bedrooms downstairs, and it was plumbed for, well, it looked like there was a bathroom down there, but there's no permit existent in your documentations that show that what we saw down there, that we, of course, did not take pictures of before we ripped it up because it was horrible. Um, let's not go there. But we are basically replacing what was there because we're putting in, we're going to do it legal, this, not like the previous owners who had it illegal.
I'd like to add that the, uh, the variance, that's my, uh, the soils guy, the soils inspector, Jesse has to sign that, then we send that to the state, and they approve of the adjustments. It's nothing that the soils guy said that couldn't happen, and the, the state didn't say that they wouldn't approve it. Jesse just has to sign that, saying he's okay with it, we send it into the state, and if they're okay with it, we can go ahead and put the system in. That's all that is. And Jesse said he'd sign that tomorrow, because Helen had called him today and told him about the situation.
I just have one more question, sorry. We got an email from a butter, I believe, of yours, who said that Mr. Winters was having some erosion control problems, um, in regards to the property and that the D E P was, he was working with the D E P.
Yes, Jesse came out and saw that, and no, no erosion had gone across, and we sent pictures that the slope is all stabilized, grass growing.
If you'd like to see that, I have pictures on my phone, I could show you.
Thank you, I was just curious.
His, uh, the butter that is giving us the problem, that it really isn't a problem, his logger had cut on our property, so we spoke with him about it, so he's a little upset, so now he's upset with us and trying to pick apart any little detail. But Jesse has been out and looked, and everything's fine. We're doing nothing illegal. That's what he told Helen, the coenforcement did.
No, he can't rule... The main department, he could rule, they say it's okay, they have to be sent to the main department, health and service. They have to go, uh, maybe got to add a seven, see if they add that.
Anyone else on the board have any other questions, or any thoughts?
My only thoughts are that the object seems to be doing, following the course that, you know, is required of, uh, we can't make that determination without Jesse's, sort of...
Well, we can approve, we tend to really continue.
Have we found this complete?
Uh, I found it last time, four of it there. They were thinking else, this is a big, big package, everything else was here, whether, yeah, we get, did we motion the last month to accept this package as complete, does it rate? No, we didn't, but all these, ask them to go back and get this report, get this study.
Well, no, we were confused, if you remember Helen, what they thought.
That's right, you're right.
What's confusing me is if you look on the subsurface water disposal, it says specific variance for...
Yes, yes.
It says ninety-three feet from...
Feet from well.
Well, leach field.
Right.
Seventeen feet from house to leach field.
Right.
Seven feet from leach fields to the thirty-three percent water.
Right.
So, um, that's the only thing that has me concerned is...
Plus, they got upsized, they got to add another paint, give them the gallons to receive to accommodate their building, their bedrooms and basement. That bothers me a lot, too. That one does.
Okay, excuse me, well, Jesse signs that, we send it into the state, and they say it's okay, I can go ahead and build that.
It's, it's got to be in. We can approve something.
Well, I can't, I ain't going to build it if you don't approve it. I ain't going to spend ten grand if you don't approve it. You have to give me an approval first, why am I going to throw ten thousand dollars at a leach field that you ain't going to approve?
I don't think you understand.
If the state approves it...
The same, before we can approve it, we need Jesse's consent, so that's all.
Jesse's got to be here to say, I signed off on this, and I agree that they're going to put it in. He's a coenforcement officer, we're not a coenforcement.
I agree with you there, but I'd like to get this going.
We can't, we can't approve it at the package.
She called in today, said he'd sign it, and so if he would have signed that, we'd be upset.
Well, the variances too, the variances bother us, a couple of us on the board.
The state makes the decision on variances. The Department of Health and Human Services.
The state seeking the victory, it's, that's frightening within itself. This is the H S.
Yes, yes. This is the Department of Health and Services, Public Services, so, Human Services, and they, we've got to make sure that everything's in line with what their requirements are.
We do think you guys are making, you guys motioned, did you have anything to add on your homework, and you've done everything?
Right, well... We understand that.
Even if Jesse signs off, the D H H S has to file with the city.
Yes, yes, they do.
Which my soils guy wouldn't do that if he thought they'd reject it.
Right, but they have to be signed off. It's got to be signed off on and become a do, a document for us to review, to say, yes, this package is complete, yes, it's going to be done, and then we can approve your application as submitted. But right now, I don't have the rest of board feels, we got, we got, we're taking motion for them.
Does the leach field have to be in to get approved, or does it just have to be approved?
It has to be approved before you put it in.
Right, because we can't afford to spend money.
Otherwise, you could spend all that money like the husband said, and the leach field will be approved. So the correct sequences.
Yes, what I'm asking is if the state approves it, then will you guys give us the go ahead to do, to do this, so that then we can start the leach field?
Can't answer that question. My name is, I got to do that. We've got to take it one step at a time. Um, can I ask you this question? Your request on the variance is for the leach field to be seventeen feet from the house, is it there right now?
No, it's not.
No, this is the expanded leach field.
The expansion has got to be, it's going to be twenty feet away, and as we expand it, we're going to come a little closer.
How many feet is it now?
Twenty.
Twenty, at least. It's been signed off, we already get an...
I just wondered if you could get by with a, you know, grandfather in that area, that variance?
We have a copy of the original, the coenforcement signed off on in two thousand, I think it was two, the year two thousand. But I had a licensed Maine soils guy design it, so why would he design it if he thought the D H H S would reject it? I don't think he would.
I understand what you're saying, sir, but that's why I'm looking at the septic design notes, he's asking for variances from the state, because he realizes that we can't meet the dimensions.
Right, but he wouldn't even design that if he thought they'd reject it.
It doesn't have one copy of the current leach field, but it is twenty feet from the house currently.
Yeah.
If anybody wants to...
That's why if you notice, the letters submitted are the septic system design notes. Right in the design notes of the gentleman who designed...
Well, no, Helen actually added that to the packet.
It said, it says...
That is, that is totally separate. Jesse has to sign that, and we send that into the state.
Right.
It's totally separate, it shouldn't even be in the packet.
But it shows that there's, they're asking for variances from the state in regards to these...
Right, from the state, not from the town. She put it with the packet. It shouldn't even be in the packet.
Yeah, it can be approved by the board, I saw that. Board has not approved, then it comes to...
We can't really find this complete, there isn't any information from Jesse.
Right, that's right, you're right. We have to have a complete package information before we can say yes or no. And those, I was going to put it in there. Variances to be approved at the local level, variances for soil conditions may be approved at the local level as long as the total point assessment is at least the minimum allowed. So there is a possibility of you getting this approved at the local level, but not by this board. We don't approve of variances.
Well, it's got to do with the state anyways. Like I said, it shouldn't even be in that packet.
But it's there, and that we've seen it now, so...
Right, it shouldn't even...
Well, that is, that was in the original package, not that last letter that Gerard read from. This, that's just a recap of everything that's in this package that was submitted to us.
Right, which the last page shouldn't have been in there, because that's between me and the state and the soils engineer.
Well, we, uh, we have that knowledge now, so we have to pay attention to it.
Also, sometimes we strip, a lot of times towns are stripped to the state, so the state be giving those variances, what's our regs?
Well, it says, if you read that last page, Gerard, it said it can be approved at the local level.
Right, but my point is, is we have to look at our regs to see if the state, if they need the state to waive certain regs, we have to see if our regs are in, in their zone, then we can work with them, rather than we be coming?
We have to send that into the state, because the guy that did the soils test sends his information to the state, that's how you get approval?
Right.
So it don't even matter.
Right, here it is now. Well, anybody else got any other questions, if we want to read through this package?
I got some in the last day out.
Okay.
This is just kind of general. Imagine you have a butter that's a little bit upset. I would suggest you do your best to smooth that out.
He won't even talk to me at this point. I already called him earlier this week because we had discussed other things in the past, and he's not even following me at all at this point.
Okay.
All right.
They should make that effort. That's what counts. They can make that effort.
And, and I think Mr. Weathers has been out there along with the E B. He has reviewed that erosion and says it does not cross over your property line, so that's what he told me the other day, so he's not concerned about it. He's the C E O, he's a code enforcement officer, and the E B was okay with it, too. So, I want the board to hear that from me. So, you guys know that has been reviewed through the E B and the C E O both. So, I want to bring that up and give you all the information.
Okay, so if we get this all settled through the state, what else am I gonna need when we come back here again?
You just need to have that, and have Jesse, well, the C E O sign off on everything that you said, that you had discussed with him. He needs to sign off on that.
Right.
That needs to forward to the state, and then we'll, I'll entertain a motion to carry this over to next month's meeting.
Prior to doing that, should we schedule a walk-through and a public hearing on this one?
Probably should.
That way we can get that done for them.
Get that done and out of the way.
If you would like. I did take the courtesy of taking pictures. I do only have one because my printer was not cooperating. This is standing at the road, at Weeks Road, looking out at the driveway.
Mm-hmm.
And then, this is standing back at the end of the lawn, looking back to Weeks Road. And then, this is the proposed driveway going down to the lower level. And then, this is where their driveway, just beside the house, the driveway will come in here, this is the bigger lower rental's yard. We can not put long here. This is the backyard. You can see the precipice here, and me trying to see the stakes for the leach field. This is the lawn on the opposite side, that of course doesn't matter anything. And then, a hundred feet away, there is a wooded area. That's showing on my map, and this is the wooded area. That's the best I could do for pictures.
We actually own the whole other side of the road, so.
Do what?
Helen and me own the whole fifty acres that, about the property we're talking about.
Okay, so we want to schedule a site review first. Does someone need to make a motion on the scheduling of a site review?
Are you saying a sidewalk?
A sidewalk, I'm sorry. Site review, sidewalk, the same thing. Yeah. I have a motion for Andy's second. Yes?
When?
We've gotta get the motion on the table first. It's only table.
It should be part of the motion.
And then, we have a, we've got a meeting already on the thirtieth of this month. There's nothing else for us, I don't think. Because we have a public hearing on the thirtieth already. That we gotta be at, some of us do.
Right, so the Saturday works best for all?
The Saturdays work best for everybody sitting here, sitting here? Okay, yeah.
So, you have, it should be advertised, so how about the second or the ninth?
Of what?
Or the sixteenth of October. Actually, hang on.
In October?
Yeah, because the next meeting is.
October twentieth.
Right, so I would suggest the ninth or the sixteenth of the week or two before the meeting. That gives you plenty of time to have it advertised.
Yeah, it gives you plenty of time to have it on the ninth. Can we amend your motion then?
Yes.
To have it on October the ninth, yeah?
What time?
We'd like to have it early. Most everybody likes to have it pretty early. Nine o'clock? Nine o'clock okay with the board? October the ninth at nine o'clock, we'll have the site visit.
Sidewalk, not sidewalk.
You got a vote on that one?
Huh?
You got a vote on it?
Yes, we got a vote on it. As I made, would you read that back to us, Desert Ray?
Our motion to have a sidewalk, October ninth at nine a.m.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, please. Unanimous?
Okay, we have a gate. We'll make sure it's open at nine o'clock. Can you come right up Weeks Road?
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Now then, public hearing?
The next meeting is October twentieth.
That's our next meeting, the boards? Can we have it right in front of that?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
First on the.
Well, wait a minute, we gotta have a motion.
Yeah, that's what I'm writing down.
And, and a motion, second by Aaron. So, we'll have a public hearing, same thing, we're gonna have our meeting right first. All in favor, please show a hand, right hand. Unanimous?
Okay, we're all set.
You're all set, sir. We appreciate your time.
We'll see you.
And patience. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, thank you.
The phone number on your application, is that the best way to get ahold of you in the Saturday, just in case we have issues with?
That's my cell.
Okay, that one's done. So now, we're carrying that one forward. Patco, now we're under new business, please. New business at this time, we'll start out with Patco. They have submitted a package to, at, for twelve ninety-three minus, well, that should be done, I'm sorry. Twenty-two twenty-seven Federal Avenue LLC, twelve ninety-three Main Street, if they're there. It's two twenty-seven, two twenty-nine, Federal Road, Route twenty-five, to increase the size of the buildings and the paint area. It reads like this. Expansion of existing self-storage facility, twenty by ninety, thirty by seventy, twenty by seventy, additions to the existing buildings, and a new thirty by a hundred foot building. This is all of self-storage. Please review your packages. If anybody's got any questions, I've been through this myself already. Everything seems to be here, so you'll know, except for one thing. I'll see, I'll bring that up when everybody gets through their package. Nice draw.
Your applicant, sir?
I am, sir.
I have just one question for you. What's the total square footage for these buildings, including the new?
It is, total building square foot is fifty-five thousand three hundred and fifty square feet, including existing and the new.
Okay.
Total square footage.
And don't we have the balance in that?
What you can have is eight, what, where it's worth, this is where we wanted the problem. It's multiple buildings.
Right, so may not apply. I know we have an open. Aggregate of all the buildings?
It doesn't say it like that. Now, it's a problem. It says any building cannot exceed fifteen thousand square feet.
Okay.
But then, if you've got multiple buildings on the same site, it don't tell us or direct us what we can do there.
This is what's happening now. I, what I did, I took all three sheets you guys got, and I can combine it into one.
Right.
The R is your expansion, is that correct?
The R is your expansion.
Right.
These are addition to, the R is your expansion, and this area back here is where we're gonna put, have to cut back into the same. We stayed short of the area of supposedly stock there. And this shows the new line we're proposing to put in the existing transportation, can help out, induction of the, 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 then that goes down across Route twenty-five.
I'm looking at my drawings, I'm all set. I love drawings. Same thing. Move building, extension too, move tape area, and a riff rack.
Yep.
Which is my.
It's a hundred, it's a mill.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Hiddlewell, is very important. When we go to page twenty in our Land Use District and Uses book, if you go to page twenty, table two, down near the bottom of that dimensional requirements, it's a matter of interpretation here, I'm gonna say. It's tough. It says minimum building singular si, building size. It don't say buildings, it doesn't say combination of buildings, it says minimum building size is fifteen thousand square feet. If you've got more than one building on a lot or on a parcel of land, then each one of those buildings cannot exceed fifteen thousand square feet, the way I read that. And they do have multiple buildings on that site that are existing at this time. Had nothing to do with us, we can't approve that. And then also, it is a village residential. The purpose of this district is to provide for residential growth and commercial uses appropriate for a village area. This district is intended to be compatible with the village district. The district provides for a mixed use of residential, commercial, and institutional uses. That's on page fourteen. And then over on page twenty again, if you go near the top, if you want to read this, the third paragraph, before you get to the dimensional requirements. If more than one residential dwelling unit, comma, principal government, governmental, comma, commercial or industrial structures or use or combination, there are, comma, is constructed or established on a single parcel of, all the dimensional requirements shall be met for each additional dwelling. There's where it throws it up. All dimensional requirements shall be met for each additional dwelling, principal structure or use. So, there's where I follow and look where I need, where we need to be at. Maybe I'm wrong, but everybody needs to read that, read that, and you guys decide it in your own mind.
The other standard that we got there is that he's got the right to use sixty percent of his lot.
Yes.
And I don't think he has anywhere near that.
Yeah, he's close.
No, where?
Overall, before you talk, let me give you, I got this, Mr. Weathers did a bunch of takeoffs from me already, a code enforcement officer.
I know.
I didn't know that. And he gave me, the existing impervious, does everybody know what impervious, impervious means?
Yeah.
The existing impervious area is three point sixty-one acres divided by the seven acre lot is fifty-one percent. Well below. Now, the total proposed impervious area means when they do all their renovations, would be four point oh three acres divided by seven acres, they'll be at fifty-seven percent, which is still below the sixty percent. He's still below the sixty percent threshold.
Correct.
The maximum lot coverage building in impervious area is sixty percent. So, he's three percent below, even after just all the modifications or renovation. I want everyone to know that. That came from the C E O. I've got the total building square footage, which goes in line with this, what we read over here in that last paragraph. And then he also said, currently there is no building over fifteen thousand square feet, and under table two, dimensional requirements states maximum building size, singular, is fifteen thousand square feet. This can be left up to interpretation, I agree with him. There's no singular building over the maximum, and only in combination is it over the maximum. That's what our C E O says.
Correct.
But when you read that paragraph up here, that's just before the table, it says they have to meet all the requirements.
They have to what?
Additional buildings.
They have to what?
Meet all the requirements. That's in here.
Requirements, meaning what?
Land use district, like VR is, minimum lot area is a quarter, a half an acre. Minimum lot without public water is point nine two, but with public water is point four six. Road frontage is a hundred feet. Things of that nature, all down through that table two.
Yeah, okay.
Maximum lot coverage building in impervious area is sixty percent or less, is in here. And maximum height of your structures cannot exceed thirty-five feet. Maximum building size, maximum building size is fifteen thousand square feet. And residential, minimum force areas and residential structures is six hundred.
Gotcha.
So, I don't know what the, what the board's, what's the board's graphics? What's the current square footage of the buildings that exist on property back here?
I have it. Remember, remind us though. Current. I'll be giving that. No, he didn't give you current. He got it. No, he didn't give you current.
Surely over fifteen.
No, well, my interpretation of that ordinance is, that's a fifteen thousand square foot building, like the old G T building was seven thousand. So, if we want to do something with that to increase it to seven, fifteen thousand, that's a whole different issue. But we're taking in the whole area that you see, and I don't think this plot, my own opinion, doesn't apply to the ordinance you have.
I'd like to agree with the applicant because if it was the case that you could only put up.
One building.
Or if you could put up multiple buildings, but they had to be less than fifteen thousand square feet in aggregate, then you wouldn't have this secondary, you know, requirement that it could cover up to sixty percent of it.
Right, right.
So, I don't see he's got any problem.
Right, I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I just want everything, I want to bring everything out of the book.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions at all? I don't want to do all the talking.
I think it definitely looks, we need to look at it a little more than that.
Okay.
I mean, how many square feet is allowable, as you said, per the size of a piece of property?
Right.
You know, there's a lot of questions.
Yeah. Does anybody see the package, though, as submitted as complete, or is there anything missing from your package that you have a question about? That's where we need to be at first. We need to be, is this package complete or is it not? Can we accept the application as complete? We've had a lot of discussions already. We haven't even asked the first question. Signs.
The sign.
Is everything left on the? Sign.
The sign.
That sounds good. Everything, but the signs on your facilities, you didn't put that on your drawing. That's what's missing.
Okay, gotcha.
No sign.
Where?
That's where it said that.
Sign.
It just says sign. Don't show us the, they need to show the sign itself. They just got a sign that grew a square off there. But they need to show it. If you're willing to visualize, that's how.
I'm sorry.
Because I know how big the sign is.
Huh?
I went down and looked, I know the sign is there, but it's not on the drawings.
Do you want to actually box it?
But it's there.
Correct. It needs to be scaled on the drawings.
Okay.
The case of false storage. We can do that.
That's everything about that that's missing in the package.
Good package. Thank you. Gerard, you got anything else? You got a question? No, not at this time.
Oh, yes, I do have a question.
Yes.
Lighting.
Yeah.
It's a very lit area, we understand you need.
I'm sorry, sir, I can't hear you.
I said it's a very lit area, we understand you have the need for security.
Yeah.
Is there any way that you could, if you put the lighting in, that you could put it down on the units?
The lighting, the existing lighting we have there will be on the same. The lighting, the existing lighting we have there will be on the same buildings that we're proposing, down. We do that for a safety reason, for people to come in at nighttime.
Right.
So it's the lighting that, we call them wall packs on the outside.
I was going to ask you, you don't use wall packs, aren't you?
Exactly.
And they're great. Wall packs are wonderful.
Yeah. I answer your question, sir, thank you.
Do you have anything with sanctions that's up in the air?
No.
Okay, everything's on wall pack.
Everything's wall pack.
Yeah, the new ones, they are very directional, they're nice units.
Yeah, they shine down right in front of the unit, so.
They go out, and they're slightly, which is fine.
Okay.
Gerard, you have anything else that you want to bring up, please?
No, I think really all we have to really find out is the dimensional requirements.
Right, so you know that square footage?
Yeah. The question you pointed out.
Yeah. But the paragraph makes that so, it gives him that leeway, the way as the language is written, but we still need to review that. The whole board needs to review that, and we need to, the board has to decide it. We need to make some type of motion, what we want to do. What does the board's, what's the board's preference? Pleasure, I would use that word, pleasure.
Why don't we table it until we get more information?
Would you make that motion, please?
Make a motion to table, to get, to answer the question about square footage.
Okay, maybe I have a second for that?
Just a minute, sir.
No?
Wait a minute. I didn't hear the motion.
Make a motion to table until we find out the square footage issue?
This, the report you got from Jesse that you read is not sufficient? Because we meet the impervious requirements.
Yes.
Okay, and the total square footage, with, total, total, from what is there now? Everything I see on Jesse's report, because I got a copy of it myself, fits.
But what we're, what each question, you guys understand, where we read the language on Table 2 and read the verbiage, we got a question about it, to where does, is the table referring to all the square footage is 15,000, which is hard to say it is, or does the square footage pertain to each building? Which it probably does, but does the record read? Hey Gerard, can you make your motion to have the secretary send that question to the MMA?
Yeah, we should get the answer from him.
Yes, we want to question that to MMA, about the square footage, building square footage. How do we want to word that, we have to think. I'm going to have, Gerard, you need to put it in your words, how do you want that written? The Association.
Right, basically, does it pertain, 15,000 square feet pertain to one building site? And does it pertain to a certain amount of how big the lot size is? Okay, it's basically the question that we had.
If you look at your own ordinance, it does not.
So you're saying, sir, what you're saying is that it's 15,000 per building?
Exactly.
Okay.
We just need that clarified through our MMA, Main Municipal Association, who is our legal counsel.
Yeah, you might be 100% right, sir.
Your problem may be right on the floor, but we're going to ask Main Municipal Association.
Okay, that's fine.
And we need to ask them that, to put our, to put the town and us at ease as a board.
That's totally fine.
Okay. So what we want to send to MMA is what Gerard just said, Desert Ray.
You making that motion?
We need to, yeah, I understand.
He needs to modify his motion.
Okay.
Yeah, the motion was modified to describe, is it 15,000 square feet under all of it? Under all of it?
Yeah.
Is it 15,000 square feet per building? And is there a lot size, or is the lot size play a role?
Because the buildings are existing on that lot already.
Right.
That's the problem.
Exactly.
Okay.
I'll, I'll type something up and send it out to see if it's what you want me to send.
I think what he's saying is.
I wish I had any answer for you, sir.
Uh, no, I understand, I understand, but the interpretation, interpretation Spago Techics went through, that does not apply. That's a 15,000 square foot building, and the maximum you have on site right now is 7,000. Which is the old GTE building.
We need to, MMA do, is look at our page 20, take it to, and define to us, I hate the dude, I'm setting it in for him and I shouldn't do that, it's his motion. Can I make an amendment to your motion, Gerard? Huh?
Sure.
Okay, I want to ask you, to, to look at Table 2 on dimensional requirements, and down where it says maximum building size, does that pertain to one building only, or does that pertain to all buildings on one lot? If you have multiple buildings on one lot, does each building get to 15,000 square feet? If the, if the acreage is large enough, or if the lot is large enough to accommodate? I hope that's, does that, is it a little better, is it right?
Again, I think I will type it up and try to, try to word it the way you're explaining it to me, send it out, and make sure that that is what you want me to send.
Okay, so that will hear from the MMA, MMA on this. Is that okay, Gerard?
That, how else have we got enough?
Yeah. So the motion's on the table, and amendments have been made, do we have a second for it as, as an amendment?
Second.
All in favor of the motion to this time, please raise your right hand. Four, and who's opposed? One. Okay, so you're, we're going to carry you over to our next meeting next month, sir, and we'll have an answer for you by then.
Gerard? Do I have to come to this next month's meeting, or will I get that through?
It's, it's your application, it's your decision, sir. Most applicants are here.
No, I have no problem, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, most applicants are here. And open here's your sign, because we have your drawing too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, have a great day.
Yeah.
He has to go due to a problem that he's, that he has at this time, he has to go to, that's all I can say about it. So we're still have a forum, are you upset? We still have a forum, we still have a forum. Okay. Let's get down to the site land review for Tanny. Is it Hanson? Yeah. Tanny Hanson, site land review for 728 North Road, Mount ROA, Lot 14, it's a proposed licensed daycare slash preschool. And I hope everyone has looked through the package, and anyone who has questions or concerns, please bring them up at this time. Is the outcome here? Do we have any others here also? To what? To 728 North Road. I'm going to vote. Okay, thank you, sir.